And although I've had a chance to see Ms. Jones on several occasions, we now have both she and also at the same time Jamie Saltmarsh, who is our North Little Rock teen, Ms. Teen for 1997 are with us, but the lady that literally has made this all possible for several years now is also here, and I'd like to call her to the microphone, and if you could introduce the two young ladies that are with us. Linda Lee, Linda has pretty much over the last several years, single-handedly, along with help from her spouse, has revived, I guess for lack of a better phrase, what was dormant for a number of years, the Ms. North Little Rock Pageant. We're awful happy that that is now becoming an annual, for three or four years, I believe, an annual event. We're very excited about the participation that the city's had a chance to do. We're also proud of both of our young ladies who are representing this year, and if I could turn the microphone over to you, Linda Lee.
Thank you, Mayor Hayes, for the kind words. We came together in many ways, and without the support of, of course, the city, we called two people right away when we heard that we were going to get the pageant back, and that was Greg Thompson over at the east campus, west campus, and then also, we needed a sponsor, so we were really thankful that the North Rock Advertising and Promotion Commission came through for us, and they have every year since. They offer the scholarship to our Ms. Teen, Ms. North Little Rock, Arkansas, and then also, this year, we came together with the North Rock Chamber, and they were able to give a scholarship, and Pulaski Bank also has helped us. So, without further ado, with all these people helping us, and all the city helping us, I think we have a real winner, not only because she's a sweet lady, but because she has so much support, and when you have that much support the city has given us, then she can't do anything but bring back the state crown. So I would like to present to you the next Ms. Arkansas, Kristy Jones.
I guess I would like to officially give this portrait to City Hall, and I appreciate you letting it hang there, and I also appreciate all of your continued support of the North Little Rock Pageant. And I will be actually leaving this Thursday to go to Hot Springs to get myself prepared for the pageant, and the pageant starts June 18th, and it goes to the 21st, so I appreciate any prayers, any cards, flowers, money, anything that you would like, no, really, just please think about me during this time and wish me luck, and I'll present this to you, and I thank you once again for all your support.
Thank you very much.
This is the first year that we've had an official state pageant, and again, North Little Rock is so represented. Kelly Thomas is the hostess for the state pageant. Mr. Lee is the booking agent for the new Ms. Teen Arkansas, and I'm the treasurer, secretary of all things, for the state pageant. And besides all of that, we're also going to have the first Ms. Teen Arkansas from North Little Rock, and she is Jamie Saltmarsh.
Hello, and I would just like to say thank you for letting me represent you. I'm so excited going down there as Ms. North Little Rock, just so I can say that I'm representing my hometown and with much pride, and thank you for letting me represent you.
Jamie, hold on just a second. We have had the opportunity, on several occasions, to share our wishes with Kristy, but I don't know that we've had to do the same with you, and one of the things that the city council does let me give away without their approval or days, so if I could, with their approval, I'm sure, give to you this greeting, be it known that I, Patrick Hayes, Mayor of the City of North Little Rock, do hereby proclaim the ninth day of June 1997 is Ms. Jamie Saltmarsh's Day in honor of being named North Little Rock Ms. Teen 1997. So, with that, and in case you want to do a little advertising for our advertising promotion, we're also going to let you don this whenever you so choose, and go with this and that proclamation, and our best wishes and prayers to both of you about our appreciation, how proud we are of the representation that you're going to give our community, and we wish you much luck. We know that at the end of the road, if it not be a crown, which we all hope, certainly will be a great deal of appreciation for this city. Thank you, Jamie, thank you, Kristy, we appreciate you all.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, do I have your permission to speak? Please?
I'll ingest, Alderman, obviously. Take your microphone.
I might also make the folks aware who will be attending the pageant in Hot Springs, the North Little Rock A&amp;P for a number of years has provided North Little Rock Blue Ribbons with the contestant's name, it appears on it, so if you're going to Hot Springs for the pageant, be sure to call the A&amp;P Commission, and they'll be tickled to death to provide you a ribbon with Kristy's name on it, to show your support for her. You bet.
Box in the car. We might have some down here at City Hall, and we'll be happy to help distribute some of them down here. We appreciate both y'all, and best of luck. With that, there's another item I'd like to ask the council's indulgence. We were active with the support of this city and this council last year in the celebration of the 25th anniversary of the McClellan-Curr Navigation Project. Under the stewardship up and down the river, a good portion of that was coordinated by Paul Rivas. Paul is the Director of the Arkansas Waterways Commission, and has asked for a moment to share something with this council. Paul, if you want to come to the microphone.
Mayor Hayes, members of the council, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to be with you tonight and to say thank you for your support, and I'd like to do that in a couple of ways, but first, I'd like to just recount some of the things that went on, and let you know that it's about a year ago we started this adventure, and I say that with some relief, that the adventure is over, almost over, but we had some great support, and I can't tell you how much, as Chairman of this committee, it was made up of about 25 people, how much I appreciated the atmosphere and the supporters that we had in North Little Rock. It was, I can't say too much here in comparing others, but I'll tell you, North Little Rock was a leader in that celebration. I'd like to especially recognize Kathy McLaughlin, who was on the committee, Todd Larson, Mayor Lou Davenport, Stephanie Milligan, Herb Daniel, and Bill and Carolyn Hughes, all leaders and great supporters for the celebration. Many of you may not remember, but it's definitely ingrained in my brain that we started this about a year ago with a big celebration at the Excelsior, and then we had about 50 boats come down the river from Tulsa. We had started out with a lot of speeches in Tulsa, and recognizing the ancestors of McClellan and Cur, and then came on down the river for about a week in this convoy of vessels. And I'll recall that we spent last Fourth of July with Mayor Hayes and several of you here at the North Little Rock Shore watching fireworks, and then we topped the celebration off with a dinner in Pine Bluff with Senator Bumper, who was our honorary chairman. The one thing that's left to do that we haven't done yet, and again, North Little Rock has taken the lead in this, is we want to put a time capsule somewhere on the river, in the riverfront project, to be opened in 25 years, and some of us have high hopes of being around to see that, and so we'll get some of the records of this celebration and the history. But I will tell you that the people of Arkansas are a wonderful group of people. I saw it firsthand as we came down the river and saw the hospitality, as we worked our way down the river, and it made me proud of Arkansas, and you have every right to be, to share that pride in your city. To remember what went on, we did several things. We published a video, and I'm leaving a number of copies in the mayor's office, and with ads and promotions, and we can probably get some more. These are reproduced by a local company, and top quality in my estimation. The other thing, another thing we did was a group of brochures like this, and tells a lot about Arkansas River and what it means to our communities, and I know your ads and promotion people have some of these already, and I'll leave some of these here tonight for you to look at. Mayor Hayes, with that, may I make a presentation to you first? This is a simple plaque that has a picture of this brochure on it, and a sunset on the Arkansas River, and the words "Sponsor." And with that, all we can say is thanks, I want to give you this, and again, copies of the video, and we appreciate your leadership in making Little Rock a leader in this celebration. Thank you.
Let me also ask a question if I could. In looking at that view of the river, what bank is that, right here?
That looks like North Little Rock.
North Little Rock. So everyone, we're awful excited, not only about certainly the participation and the spotlight that you helped bring to the river last year. I think all of us are continuing to wait with anticipation what many of us for so long forgot, and that's when we've turned our backs to the river, but now I think we're facing in the right direction. We're looking at the river and looking to the future and making it one of the nicest places, at least in central Arkansas, as you are throughout the state. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. With your indulgence, I'd like to ask Mr. Murray Witcher and Clark McLaughlin to come forward. I have a similar presentation to make to them, and Clark was an ad hoc member of our committee through Kathy, so let me get that. Clark, as representatives of the Ads and Promotions Committee, Mr. Witcher, we want to give this to you on behalf of the committee, with our sincere appreciation for your support too, in the whole city of North Little Rock. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Paul. We appreciate the work you do, and keep us informed. We look forward to being a partner in future opportunities to spotlight what I think most of us feel is one of our best assets, and that's the river. If I could turn us back to the agenda and ask for the blanket motion with reference to communications, is there a second? On the motion, Ms. Muns?
On the blanket motion to accept all communication, Gibson?
Yes.
McLaughlin?
Yes.
Scoggins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Bestow?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
And Spinelli?
Yes.
Sir, we have one that was filed by Alderman Witcher and Spinelli, right before council meeting, and what a pleasure.
Mayor, this was handed to the two of us shortly before the meeting started, and we'd like to have it read, just the title, if there's no objections.
Any objection, any member of the council, on this late filing? Without objection, Ms. Muns, if you'd read it by title?
All right, sir, this is a petition signed by 63 names listed below. Our residents petitioning the City of North Little Rock to have speed bumps removed on Mission and Osage Street.
I don't know how many signatures are on there, Mayor, but I'd like to move-
I counted 63.
63. I'd like to move accept and file, and I'd also like to ask that our traffic sign director, Tim Marvin, make a recommendation as to whether they should be removed or whether they should remain.
Second.
Move for acceptance and file, and requesting a written recommendation from Mr. Marvin. I don't think Mr. Marvin's here, but I'll-
There he is.
Oh, you are, right. Tell you what, I'm going to, and I assume your motion is one or both, you know, not whether collectively they ought to be removed or remain, but treat each of them individually.
Correct.
Okay. I'll visit with you, Tim, and we'll seek your advice, so I'll have that available for the next council meeting. Is that-
That's fine.
On the motion, Ms. Muns?
Gibson?
Yes.
McLaughlin?
Yes.
Scoggins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Bestow?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
And Spinelli?
Yes.
That's all, sir, in petition.
Thank you, Ms. Muns, can we go to the agenda?
All right, sir, the old business first, R-9754, Alderman Witcher.
Hold it, please.
R-9789, Mayor Hayes.
Let's hold that one.
R-9793, Mayor Hayes.
Let's call that one.
All right, sir, this is a resolution approving an amount of lien to be certified to the Pulaski County Tax Collector against certain real property as a result of expenses incurred by the City of North Little Rock in removal of a condemned structure.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
McLaughlin?
Yes.
Scoggins?
Yes.
Thomas?
No.
Carter?
Yes.
Bestow?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
And Spinelli?
Yes.
That's all, the old resolutions.
Go to ordinance.
O-9717, Alderman Gibson.
I believe that this has expired due to the time.
All right, withdrawn.
It's automatically off the calendar.
Yes, all right. O-9734, Alderman Thomas?
24.
24, I'm sorry.
Let me find myself here.
Well, see, this is, this is something wrong here.
What I'd like to do, I'd like to offer an amendment. City Attorney has prepared an amendment for us. What do I need to do, make a motion?
We need to have it called, so she can read it.
You call it if you will, please.
Okay, it was read the first time and returned to calendar March the 24th, read the second time, returned to calendar on April 14. This is your third and final reading. An ordinance amending the North Little Rock Municipal Code provisions regarding alarm systems, third and final.
You want to move for adoption?
Yes, I'll move for the adoption, I'd like to speak.
And then, yes, moved and seconded, now you have an amendment?
Yes, we had an amendment. Essence, what it really says is that those alarm systems that would cause a real problem, even though they're not connected to the police department, or to the alarm system, the chief could still go ahead and declare that they're not in line with the ordinance where we're exempting those type of systems. I don't know if they're clear or not, but does anyone have any question on that? The city attorney can explain what he's prepared there for us.
Mr. Morley?
Mayor, our alarm, excuse me, our alarm ordinance has a number of exemptions from the definition of false alarm. What this is, is an additional exemption from that definition of false alarm, which I would direct your attention to Section 1. It states activation of a lighting or audible device not connected by telephone or other means to alert law enforcement personnel or third parties contracted to notify law enforcement personnel. However, should the repeated or habitual activation of such a device unreasonably and consistently falsely deploy, and thereby annoy neighboring property owners, the Chief of Police may in writing to the property owner declare such a device to be a false alarm for purposes of this section. So what it does is, it allows some discretion with respect to something that does annoy people to be declared a false alarm. We do have certain instances in which devices are merely intended to ward off burglars by the activation of a light or a sound device that automatically deploy after a period of time. In certain instances, we've had cases where neighbors, as a result of other matters, animosity existing between them, will in fact call into the police department for the activation of a light or sound device, and say that this alarm has gone off. What this has done is create some difficulties with respect to people who are attempting to minimize the service of the police department, and in fact, it has increased the use of the police department. We think it allows for the Chief of Police to determine when one of these becomes a problem, and thereby allow people to attempt to ward off burglars and thieves without creating unnecessary problems for their neighbors.
Any questions? You need to move for the adoption of the amendment?
I want to make one other statement, too. For my own business, I know over the years, at least we've had three or four break-ins, and I have two of these alarms inside the building. You're very seldom would even hear it outside, so I haven't had any police calls, any police action there at all, but I've gone to my place on at least three times since I've put this in and found the doors open, nothing missing. So I assume what they do when they get inside and it goes off, they leave. So I think that, in my case, I'm not worried because the police wouldn't even hear it if it's going down on the street, but you'd certainly hear it inside the building. But I'd hate for somebody, you know, to call the police, and they'd have to come out there, and I'd be charged for that. So that's the reason that I was hoping that this would pass, and I'd like to move for the adoption of the amendment.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion on the motion to amend? Ms. Muns, on the motion to amend?
Gibson?
Yes.
McLaughlin?
Yes.
McLaughlin, I got on the same page.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He'll be back.
All right. Scoggins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Bestow?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
And Spinelli?
Yes. Mayor, before we vote on this, I guess my only question, what does it take to make repeated or habitual?
You know, obviously, that's probably a fact determination that, you know, that the chief would have to make, certainly more than one, probably more than two, and then it depends on the timeframe, and, you know, so it's a judgment call, but it's certainly a judgment call that the chief would make based on all the facts surrounding it.
Because what happens, what happens is, unlike old ones, many of these are outside, and you can hear them, and yes, by pure nature, the police are called, and almost a worse problem is what we're having with the car alarms on the cars, and having to run to some mall because some alarm situation's going off too, that's going on. I just, I want to make sure that we don't use undue police, I like that they're working crime, not traffic, like they're doing, and it's, we're seeing some results, particularly in our neighborhoods, but I just want to make sure that I don't overwork.
Well, one of the things, and then, I'm sorry, Alderman, one of the things that I think there's always an opportunity is, you know, is if something like this, you know, should be passed by this council, and it becomes a burden, then I'm sure the chief and I will be the first ones up here to ask the council for some modifications. Alderman, Thomas?
Each time that I had to call the police out, they did a good report on what was missing, and all the things that was taken, never did get anything back, but since I've had an alarm, I hadn't had anything missing, so that's the reason I thought it would be a, and in fact, I won't even put one in my own house, because I'm not going to hook it up to the police department, but I just don't feel that the bugger is going to stay there very long with that alarm going off.
Do you have a motion to adopt as amended?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on the motion to adopt as amended? Ms. Muns?
To adopt as amended, Gibson?
Yes.
McLaughlin?
Yes.
Scoggins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Bestow?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
And Spinelli?
Yes.
This does carry an emergency clause, doesn't it?
I don't, I don't see one on the amendment.
It does not.
No, no, it's not.
No, no, it doesn't.
Okay, no emergency. We go to the next one, O-9734, Alderman Thomas. All right, and then, O-9735, Alderman Spinelli and Witcher.
We'd like that read the second time and hold it, and I believe Lee Black with our emergency service would like to speak just for a minute.
All right.
I always like to listen to Lee.
You want to go ahead and-
An ordinance requiring display of the address of all residential and commercial buildings in North Little Rock, second reading.
Lee. Before, as Lee comes up, let me point out something to council members, as well as those at home. We have a new camera that is here over Alderman Spinelli's left shoulder. We have recognized that since the relocation of the camera that used to be over by the press section, we were having some difficulty in having our home audience be able to see those at the microphone as well as the audience.
Mayor, is that because their heads are too big over there?
I'm too sure.
Well, you just re-elected, Alderman, I'm trying to remember. You come up this next year.
Could be the only city attorney without a budget.
We have this installed, this is the first night that it's being used, and it gives us an opportunity to pan into the audience, as well as to focus on the speaker's platform. We hope that it's a nice addition to the opportunity for those at home to see a little bit more of a broader view of the council chambers, and so if those of you at home are regulars and seeing something different, we hope it's enjoyable. It's going to be, I think, a fine addition to give you a better ability to keep up with what's going on at the speaker's platform, as well as at home. So as that rotates, we have an additional eye that's in the council chamber, as well as we hope many at home. Lee?
The reason that we're concerned about the addressing of dwellings is because our fire units and our police units, when they respond on an emergency, a lot of the addresses for the dwellings do not have a number displayed on there. As a result, we have police officers radioing, and our firefighters, the same thing, especially at night, is they're saying, you know, what is the number of the dwelling? We give them the number as it comes in on the 911 system. I'm afraid that if we don't address this issue soon, and we, for the safety of the citizens, and that's the whole issue, is we would like to see the numbers put on dwellings or something that is visual for the responding units. At night, if it's on the curb, it's difficult to see. We don't have a lot of problems with businesses because we have what we call common names or places in our CAD system, so as a result, when we put McCain Mall or the other center, it validates an address for us. However, if we have a dwelling, the areas that we're concerned with is Outrose City, where we ban next, new property, Out to Maule, Buckham Pike. When we did the 911 system, most of our dwellings had a number attached to it, but some of them had route boxes, Route 1 Box 321, whatever, those have still not been changed. So for the safety of the citizen, we're saying we need to have some numbers on the dwelling. Whatever method you come up with, it's going to help the police and fire, it's that simple.
One of the things, and I, to give you a little bit of background, we do have a requirement at present, it's somewhat ambiguous, well, it's not ambiguous, but it's buried a little bit. This council adopted the fire code some, several years ago, and a part of that code requires that all structures, all buildings, have legible addresses, so it's a requirement through the adoption of the fire code. That, to my knowledge at this point, I haven't had a chance to talk to the city attorney, doesn't appear to have any penalty associated with it that I recall, at least in my review. There may have been an overall penalty in the section of the fire code, but Mr. City Attorney, do you-
Off the top of my head, I think you're right, Mayor, and that's one of the reasons why it would be a good idea to place it within the actual municipal code instead of a technical code, also because access tends to be easier to the municipal code than the technical codes.
And I don't think that any of us want to get into a position of essentially cracking a whip. This is something that is in everyone's self-interest to do, and certainly our neighbors to the South are making an effort, I think, maybe that's how some of this was brought to light. I know one of the things that we're getting ready to do, and maybe the passage of this would be certainly an advisable thing, and that is to provide the capability for us to insert something in changing our billing system. I don't know how quickly, Mr. Sisson, do you know how quickly if we clipped along at a fairly reasonable rate that that capability would be available to us?
It might be in the middle of next year.
Middle of next year, so we still got some time left, but I think notice and some prodding is perhaps the way that we want to do this, and I think most folks would go along with it, but I'd have to compliment this legislation and the two council members, because I think it's something that we ought to get started and try to do. It's in everyone's interest to have a legible address on their structure. Alderman?
Mayor, I just want to make it plain that we certainly don't want to punish or fine anyone, and this, the whole ideal and concept of this is to make the citizens of North Little Rock want to do, it's for all of our own benefits. You have a lot of elderly people that live by theirself, if they get sick and they give an address, if there are three or four houses in a row without an address, and there are a- without an address, and there are plenty of them like that in North La Rock, an ambulance can come, they may not know which house it is, and that person could lose their life because of that simple error. So we're, certainly would appreciate citizens' input and cooperation in this matter. Now, Lee, right before the meeting, showed me an ordinance, and I have not had an opportunity to look at it from another city, and they go into great detail as to where and how the, the letters should be placed, so we want to hold it, take a look at that ordinance, we may want to use one similar to it, we may want to amend this one, and anyhow, that's all I have, Lee. Thank you.
Let me ask, Alderman, do you intend to try to bring this to a vote next council meeting?
Probably not.
Okay, so you, we, we have some time, and, and I would encourage any council member as well as the community to, to feel free to address this issue, because I think the two council members are certainly expressing what I believe to be the proper sentiment, and that is self-interest is the best motivator, and this is probably one of the biggest and easiest things to accomplish that would certainly be in self-interest of all those structures that are occupied by whomever has that responsibility. With that, next item, Ms. Muns?
Uh, we go to oh ninety-seven thirty-six, but it really is referred back to planning commission at this time. So that's all of the old business, sir.
Let's go to new business.
Uh, R ninety-seven one oh eight, Mayor Hayes. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract of obligation with the Department of Pollution Control and Ecology.
Move for adoption.
Motion, second. On the motion, Ms. Muns?
Uh, Gibson?
Yes.
McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Scoggins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Bestow?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
And Spinelli?
Yes.
R ninety-seven one oh nine, Mayor Hayes?
Please call it.
A resolution appropriating thirty-four thousand, sixty-four dollars and fifty-one cents for, excuse me, for relocation of Riverboat Spirit.
Move for adoption, second.
Motion, second. On the motion, Ms. Muns?
On the motion, Gibson?
Yes.
McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Scoggins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Bestow?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
And Spinelli?
Yes.
R ninety-seven one ten, Mayor Hayes?
Please call it.
A resolution appropriating twenty-two thousand dollars from the nine-one-one fund for purchase of equipment to upgrade police and fire departments' computers.
Move for adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, before I call the motion, I'd like to compliment, and, and certainly acknowledge, Officer Montgomery, where is Officer, oh, and Leonard is, is, is if anyone in the police department, unless somebody's swiped his hat, which I doubt, is the one that is the principal architect of, of computer and, and that kind of a technology as it applies to our department. We also want to acknowledge what, which I understood today is, is another thing that we ought to congratulate Leonard on. He, just today, if I'm not mistaken, put on Lieutenant Color, Lieutenant Colonel, took off the scrambled eggs and put on the silver, so, in the air, in the Arkansas Air National Guard, is that correct? The Air Force Reserve. So Leonard's here in case anyone has any questions on this issue, feel free to ask, but also we wanted to acknowledge his good work for the department as well as his military promotion today. Thanks, Leonard, and thanks for being a part of, of our police department. Uh, on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Scoggins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Bestow?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
And Spinelli?
Yes.
R ninety-seven one twelve, Alderman Thomas?
Call it, please.
A resolution authorizing Community Development Agency to make a home project deferred loan grant in the amount of twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars to Samuel and Cleora Wilburn, eleven-eleven G Street in Dixie, Ward Two.
Move for adoption, second.
On the motion?
On the motion is Gibson?
Yes.
McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Scoggins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Bestow?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
And Spinelli?
Yes.
R ninety-seven one thirteen, Alderman Thomas?
Call it, please.
A resolution authorizing Community Development Agency to make a home project deferred loan grant in the amount of twenty-four thousand, one hundred dollars to Eleonora Cooksey, two fifteen East Twelfth Street, Ward Two.
Move for adoption, second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Scoggins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Bestow?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
And Spinelli?
Yes.
R ninety-seven one fourteen, Alderman Gibson and McGlaughlin?
I'd like to call it, please, and then, and to cut, to set a public hearing also, yes.
All right, sir. This is a resolution authorizing for the installation of new traffic control devices for the intersections of Fairway and North Hills Boulevard and Lakeview and North Hills Boulevard.
Uh, for purposes, I move for adoption so I can get it on the...
Second. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, Alderman?
Mayor, there are a few people here tonight that'd like to make some comments on this. I know we'd also like to set a public hearing on this issue because the issue is access, not speed. And, and, and we've got a stretch that's probably a mile and a half long on North Hills with no place to get across it. Got a lot of good suggestions from the neighborhood in the last two days, and, Clark, when you'd like to have a public hearing, on the fourteenth or the twentieth of July?
Next council meeting, seven o'clock.
Up to y'all.
Seven oh five, whatever.
Unless there's an objection, then we'll call a public hearing, seven oh five, for the next council meeting.
And I believe that gentlemen would like to make some comments about this at this time.
Uh, could you state your name, please, and recognize that, that the council is going to focus on this issue in two weeks, so you'll have another opportunity then to...
I do understand, and he, he asked me to come back and say something, so I was going to sit back down. No problem. But very quickly, there is some opposition to this, and I think a public hearing is the right thing to do. The issue, of course, is access, and whilst with this, we'll solve an access problem. I've got some other problems with erecting two new stoplights all the way, and, and, you know, so several of these intersections will be next, and, and we really need a public debate on this before we move.
Absolutely. I, I just want to point out, could you state your name, please?
Brad Greenway.
Uh, Mr. Greenway, I know that, that, that our traffic services director does not recommend that this as a, as a solution, so, you know, it, it obviously is not, not a foregone conclusion that this will be done. We certainly want public input. I know that those two intersections have presented problems, at least for the eight years that I've been here, and, and we hope that maybe this will, uh, give us some, some alternatives that we can look at, and, and yet I wanted to assure you that traffic lights are by no means a foregone conclusion at this point.
They are a problem. I live on North Hills, um, we just wanted a little more time to compile accident data and so forth, so we'd find some issues. He, he says the, the issue is access, and while it may be his issue, I'm finding some of my neighbors, because they say it's a safety issue, so I have to address it for him and some of my neighbors who might help me as well, so thank you.
Sure. Thanks for being here. Next item, Ms. Muns?
Uh, the next item, R ninety-seven one fifteen, Mayor Hayes?
Please call it.
A resolution setting a public hearing to determine the cost of the city's removal of condemned structures and, for the purpose, a certifying said amount to be placed as tax liens against the real property upon which said structures existed.
Move for adoption, second.
Alderman?
Mayor, I know in the past I've been opposed to these liens, and I, I just looked down the list here the other day, and I noticed one here, for instance, FMA Holman. Now, FMA has been, you know, attending and working with our mayors, all the way from Mayor Lawhorn to, I'm guessing you, and, so she can't do that anymore, she can't attend, she's in a nursing home, and we're trying to put, we'll be asking for better than seven thousand, eight hundred dollars lien on the property, and that's the reason that I've been reluctant to put liens on these homes of elderly people who, who spent most of their life here and have had a, a big part in the development of this city, and that's the reason that I, I'm, you know, voting against that.
Alderman, and I, I appreciate that sensitivity, and you're absolutely right. Ms. Holman, I think, is one of the reasons that, that perhaps when she quit coming and is now in a nursing home, that the ratings of this council meeting probably dropped in half. We all remember Sterling Twelve Star Pain and, and the, certainly the, the grand lady that Ms. Holman is. However, you know, Alderman, I do support this legislation, obviously, and, and, you know, and again, I'll repeat what I said before, that, you know, if anyone wants to come and, and make a, a beneficial use of this property, I will be the first to, you know, to try to, to resolve that lien in a favorable way to, to put that property into productive use. However, there is property all over this community that we don't have any ability to try to work with any owner, ownership of that, and, and I think this is a very important step to give us that opportunity, and, and for that reason, I, even with Ms. Holman, support this, but again, if, if anyone wants to come and, and, and put some ideas to, to potential productive use of that property, I'll be the first one to sponsor legislation that would, you know, in some way encourages that to be done and, and resolve that lien in a favorable way. Uh, with that, I'm calling that legislation. Ms. Muns, do we have a motion on that or don't?
Yes, we do.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the motion, Ms. Muns?
Gibson?
Yes.
McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Scoggins?
Yes.
Thomas?
No.
Carter?
Yes.
Bestow?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
And Spinelli?
Yes.
Uh, R ninety-seven one sixteen, Mayor Hayes?
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located in various sections of the city of North La Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for the property owners to abate these nuisance.
Move for adoption, second.
Uh, any discussion on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Scoggins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Bestow?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
And Spinelli?
Yes.
And on its amending budget, ordinance number seventy-twenty-three, to provide funding for certain capital improvements to the airport facilities, first reading.
Move suspend the rules and place it on the second reading?
Second.
On the motion, suspend, Ms. Muns?
Gibson?
Yes.
McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Scoggins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Bestow?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
And Spinelli?
Yes.
And on its amending budget, ordinance number seventy-twenty-three, to provide funding for certain capital improvements to the airport facilities, second reading.
Move suspend the rules and place it on the third reading?
Second.
On the motion, suspend, Ms. Muns?
Gibson?
Yes.
McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Scoggins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Bestow?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
And Spinelli?
Yes.
And on its amending budget, ordinance number seventy-twenty-three, to provide funding for certain capital improvements to the airport facilities, second reading.
Move suspend the rules and place it on the third reading?
Mayor, at some point, I have a minor amendment.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Suspend the rules. On the motion, suspend?
Uh, Gibson?
Yes.
McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Scoggins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Bestow?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
And Spinelli?
Yes.
And on the third reading?
What are you reading that?
Have we done?
Third.
Second.
Where are we?
I, we just read it the second time.
We just read it the second time.
So it's ready for its third and final reading.
Yeah, let's go ahead and read it third time. And we need a suspension of the rules, Ms. Muns?
No.
Okay, if you'll go ahead, then, uh, then read it a third time.
And on its amending budget, ordinance number seventy-twenty-three, to provide funding for certain capital improvements to the airport facilities, third and final reading.
Alderman?
In the first whereas, it should be, and the third line should say twenty-five thousand instead of forty-five thousand for contribution for the new airport building. I believe that's the only amendment.
All right.
The numbers come out right, it's just small type of...
Yeah, we got, Mr. Morley's a lawyer, not a mathematician, is that right?
Actually, I'd just like for Alderman Gibson to have something to say.
You know, I think we should note, I think we should note that the mayor signed this before, his signature's above the city attorney's...
I too just wanted to ask Gibson to have something to say.
You need to do a better job of mowing my yard.
Is there, is there a, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
On the motion to amend, Ms. Muns?
Uh, Gibson?
Yes.
McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Scoggins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Bestow?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
And Spinelli?
Yes.
Will we adopt as amended?
Second.
All right, before I ask for a vote, I just want to point out, Neil Bryant and several members of the airport commissioner here, the, the bids came in approximately fifty All right, before I ask for a vote, I just want to point out, uh, Neil Bryant and several members of the Airport Commissioner here, the, the bids came in, uh, approximately fifty thousand dollars over, uh, you know, what we had set aside. And, and I had, uh, you know, to, to their credit, I, if I recall, I, part of the Chairman, Mr. Bryant's negotiations with me about this additional money was, uh, that he and Alderman Witcher would go out and put in the plumbing free of charge. I almost took him up on that, but there's a big tear welled in my eye, knowing that, uh, that our, our military chairman is, is on retirement. I, you know, sort of reluctantly backed up. But I wanted to point that, this out to the council, uh, that of that twenty-five thousand that they're matching, uh, with the twenty-five from the city, uh, that money had been set aside in case there was an adverse ruling by the Arkansas Supreme Court relative to a tax issue. I think it had to do with taxing of, uh, of private facilities that are leased. Is that not correct, Mr. Morley?
That's correct.
Uh, and so rather than, than that money sit there for a potential adverse decision, you know, Alder, I mean, Chairman, uh, Bryant agreed to, uh, to put that in with my assurance that if we had an adverse ruling, that I would come back to the council and, and seek enough to cover whatever that ruling is, up to twenty-five thousand dollars. And, uh, and so I, I hope not to be back, uh, but, uh, we look forward to the legal talent of our city attorney's office, but there is a possibility that, that that may happen, uh, and I just wanted to point that out to council. With that, on the motion, Ms. Munds?
To adopt as amended, uh, no, yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Gibson?
Yes.
McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Skoggins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Bestow?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
And Spinelli?
Yes.
On your emergency, Gibson?
Yes.
McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Skoggins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Bestow?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
And Spinelli?
Yes.
An ordinance appropriating funds from special housing fund to the demolition program. First reading.
Mayor, I'd like to take this third reading. I may hold it, I need a little small minor amendment on it. Uh, move suspend rules and place it on the second reading.
Second. On the motion?
Uh, Gibson?
Yes.
McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Skoggins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Bestow?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
And Spinelli?
Yes.
An ordinance appropriating funds from the special housing fund to the demolition program. Second reading.
Mayor.
Alderman?
Often I do make mistakes, and sometimes I do try to come back and correct them. When I brought in the legislation, asking that the money be taken out of the drainage fund to take care of the people who wanted to tear down their own houses and fund a program, uh, I simply overlooked the fact that we still had money left in the special housing fund to do that, and there was no reason to tap the funds in the drainage program to do that program. Uh, I guess, Mr. Baxter, my question, does this make it clear that the money will come from this and not from the drainage program?
Yes, sir, you know, in addition, we do have the, uh, program for CDBG, and currently all the applicants that we've had have come, have been eligible in the community development areas. So, uh, I took it from this that, that we would not be using the drainage fund, but be using this one when the CDBG program was not eligible.
Thank you.
Alderman Thomas?
I think that this is, is a proper ordinance. The only question I guess I had, uh, from, uh, Mr. Sisson, how much money do we have in that fund?
I believe there's about ninety thousand left, Alderman.
So there's more money to spend there?
Yes, sir. Okay. And this, this is a fund we've used several times to use to tear down houses from, and, and hopefully we would be able to put some money back into it. It has not happened that way. It was, this is money that, uh, was part of a housing refinance issue in probably ninety-one or ninety-two. So, uh, I think, I guess I need to suspend rules and place it on the third reading.
Second. Uh, moved and seconded, suspend the rules, Ms. Munds?
Uh, Gibson?
Yes.
McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Skoggins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Bestow?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
And Spinelli?
Yes.
Does this carry an emergency?
No, ma'am.
No emergency. Uh, oh ninety-seven, thirty-nine, uh, Alderman Thomas?
Hold that, please.
Hold it, all right. And, um...
We could, uh, we can read it once.
You want to go ahead and read it, Ms. Munds?
Yes, sir. An ordinance providing for thirty days' notice to property owners prior to their real property being administratively condemned by the code enforcement department. First reading.
All right, hold it and go to the next one.
Uh, the last one, um, it, no, next to the last one. Oh ninety-seven, forty, Alderman Carter?
Please call it, Ms. Munds.
An ordinance allowing especially used for a storage warehouse requiring an I-one zone and a C-three zone for certain real property located at the Acme Bridge Company at the northeast corner of Count Masse Road and Marmel Boulevard in the city of North Rock, Arkansas. First reading.
Move suspend rules and place it on the second reading.
Second. On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Skoggins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Bestow?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
And Spinelli?
Yes.
An ordinance allowing especially used for a storage warehouse requiring an I-one zone and a C-three zone for certain real property located at the Acme Bridge Company at the northeast corner of Count Masse Road and Marmel Boulevard in the city of North Rock, Arkansas. Third and final reading.
On the question?
Gibson?
Yes.
McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Skoggins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Bestow?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
And Spinelli?
Yes.
Oh ninety-seven, forty-one, Alderman McGlaughlin?
Call it, please.
An ordinance allowing especially used for a summer daycare requiring an R-five or R-six zone and R-three zone for certain real property located nineteen hundred Owen Street in the city of North Rock, Arkansas. First reading.
Please suspend the rules and place it on the second reading.
Second. On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Skoggins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Bestow?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
And Spinelli?
Yes.
An ordinance allowing especially used for a summer daycare requiring an R-five and R-six zone and R-three zone for certain real property located nineteen hundred Owen Street in the city of North Rock, Arkansas. Third and final reading.
Alderman?
I guess my question, Mr. Falls, this says summer daycare. I thought they were going to operate the daycare facilities all year.
No, they say they wanted to operate it just during summer. We did bring that out at Planning Commission.
Not enough.
On the question?
On the question, Gibson?
Yes.
McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Skoggins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Bestow?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
And Spinelli?
Yes.
Sir, that is all the legislation.
Hi, Ms. Munds, I'd like to point out, uh, you know, to the council, as well as to the, uh, any members of the community, that we have, we now have, as prepared by the city attorney's office, a petition, uh, I think at the request of Alderman Spinelli, that, uh, that we are certainly going to have circulated prior to the installation of any, uh, any new speed humps, uh, and, uh, and those will be available, uh, at City Hall as well as the Planning Commission. Ms. Munds will keep some copies, uh, as well as the mayor's office if anyone wants any. Uh, if they want some mail, we'll be happy to mail them, uh, either call the city clerk's office or the mayor's office, and we'll be happy to do that. Uh, we want to make sure that we try to be as responsive to the citizens with regard to that speed control device as possible, and we thank the city attorney, uh, for putting this together. Uh, any member of the council have any comments?
I have.
Alderman?
Um, I've had some discussions, I think it was Mr. Falls, about, about the petition and possibly some sort of policy to go along with the petition. Uh, you know, it's, it'd be easy to go down the street and get ten, twelve names on the petition, but that doesn't tell you how many people on the street don't want it put in. Um, so I was wondering, you know, if before we go down this road of, of supplying the petitions for, for the people to sign, uh, another thing that came up in our discussions that goes back to the, to the very beginning, when I first started down this road with, uh, information I got from the city of Portland, was that, um, the policy there was that once they're put in, uh, they'll stay in for no less than, I believe it was six months or a year, or something like that. The expressed intent of that being, make people think about what they were doing before they just jumped right in and did this. And with that policy, uh, they had very few removals, if I recall my discussions with their traffic services department up there. Uh, because I, and I think we all see, it's a, it's a fairly significant thing to do. It has some fairly significant consequences. And I'd certainly, you know, before we honor, and I want to do what the people in the neighborhood want to do, if the majority of the people on that street, if that's what they want to do on their street, then I'm behind them a hundred percent. Uh, but I want to make sure that, that that's the majority of the people on that street, that, that that's what they want to do. And I really want them to give it serious consideration before they put their name on the petition.
Mayor.
So... Alderman?
I, I'm glad Mr. Carter brought that up, because I've already asked city attorney to do exactly what, uh, Dan recommended. He is going to present, uh, a policy in the form of a resolution outlining the steps, uh, not only circulating the petition, but possibly calling a public hearing, so that not only those people that live on the street who are affected by the speed break, but those who live adjacent to that street and use the street who are affected by it daily would have a chance to voice their opinion. But there will be a policy on, uh, on these speed breaks coming within the next few meetings. I agree with what you said.
Let me also suggest, uh, Mr. City Attorney, as you draft that, uh, it's, it's my thinking, and Mr. Marvin's in the audience, uh, that we either do this once a year or twice a year, uh, in terms of, of those speed humps that we want to put up. It's much easier to get a contract with multiple speed humps than it is to do them kind of willy-nilly. So, uh, uh, if we could give some thought, uh, Mr. Marvin, have you got any suggestions on whether we try this once a year or twice a year, or, uh, going through the process perhaps twice a year? And if so, at what times I know that, you know, that, uh, that this is a, you know, maybe not a seasonal job, but asphalt has temperature constraints to it. Do you want to comment?
These speed humps obviously have opponents and proponents. Um, if we're going to have, uh, as many as fifteen, and that's somewhat arbitrary, that is enough to get a good unit price. Um, I, I think we could easily have fifteen twice per year. It, it may not be desirable on, on, uh, this body's, uh, part to, to have it twice per year. So, two, two, twice per year probably is about the maximum in order to have them, uh, installed during favorable weather.
Would you work with the city attorney's office? Because what I'd like to do is, is in keeping with what, uh, Alderman Carter and Alderman Spinelli have commented on, is, is almost to, you know, to set this up, uh, in a, in a chronological way, that, you know, that there are certain steps that people have to do and a hearing that we have to have, and, and, and have it done by a certain council meeting where, you know, we can act on these maybe twice a year. And if we have, you know, the council can decide if we've got fifteen that have gone through this process and are up, then we can go ahead and, uh, and, and, you know, vote to, uh, uh, to pass the legislation to let bids, or, or whatever would be the most sensible way to try to address this, you know, perhaps twice a year would be my, would be my thinking. Is that, any council member have any?
I think that's an excellent idea, Mayor. As a matter of fact, I had already instructed Mr. Morley to contact him, because I, I want his recommendation as part of the process.
Because so what, what we're trying to do, and I think this council is going to work real hard at that, you know, is, is to maybe address this issue twice a year and give people plenty of lead time to know what they've got to go through in order to, um, do the preliminary work in, in terms of neighborhood acceptance or rejection, uh, and, uh, and then give this council a chance to accept or reject each of those based on that preliminary work, and we can address this twice a year.
I think that'd be a very orderly way to take care of it.
Alderman Carter?
Mayor, and one more request that, that I would have, and, you know, I, I think we can put together a policy that's fairly, fairly neat and easy to understand, is that that policy, whatever it might be, be included on this petition, so anyone signing the petition knows what the policy is, or has the opportunity to read the policy before they sign the petition.
Okay, and let's, let's sort of work through this, and, uh, because I know we, we've been kind of a little bit disjointed. Why don't we work through this policy, if this is all right with the council, uh, and, uh, and, and work through it, uh, with, uh, with this next set of speed humps? So, you know, Mr. Morley, if you could kind of, we'll put everything, as far as I'm concerned, on, on hold until we get this policy adopted, and, and then we work through it kind of chronologically in terms of what has to be done, give people plenty of time to do it, and try to set it up maybe one more time this year, uh, because it'll take a while for them to go through it. So it ought to be in the, you know, perhaps late summer, early fall. And then I think that'd give us plenty of time, wouldn't it, Mr. Marvin, to get one more, uh, contract out this year in, in time before perhaps winter sets in, in, in December or January?
One additional contract this year?
I think that's probably what we're looking at. Uh, so if we can kind of work toward that, and then in terms of the resolution, set it up maybe twice a year. Any other comments from the council on this, or any other issue? Alderman, uh, go ahead.
Uh, if I could, could I ask, uh, Mr. Ward to come to the microphone, please? Uh, Mr. Ward, I've gotten, uh, several complaints lately about a ditch that runs from Idaho, crosses Louise, and goes over into that field back there between Military and Arrowhead area.
I'm aware of that, yes.
Um, now, we cleaned out a portion of that about three years ago, which is up on the upper end, on the north end of that. Um, and I would, uh, if it's all possible, I'd like to, uh, expedite the process of us cleaning out that ditch again this year, because I'm getting complaints about that. It was, uh, flooding, and we build up in it, so we're not getting any flow.
I'm aware of that situation out there, and I've already looked at it, and I've already talked to a couple of people on the street there about it, how we are going to get to it as quick as we possibly can. Thank you, sir. Uh, you want to stay there just a second, Mr. Ward, Alderman Thomas?
I think I've already mentioned it to, Mr. Ward, but out on Willow Wood, I have a, a, a letter here with a number of names of people asking that we resurface their street. Uh, I know, uh, I guess it was Philip Anasakis that, uh, brought this to me, and if we could at all, I'd certainly like to see it. That little street, there's a church at the end of it, often Lynch Drive, and I'd like to see us, uh, resurface that, because it needs it very badly.
We've already looked at that street, and we've got it on the list to be resurfaced.
And, and the other thing, while we're there, uh, we're, we're going to make a little connection there near, near the, um, uh, school on Lynch Drive down to the church, and we'd like, uh, to try to do that as quick as we can. I know you've, you're aware of that one also, but...
We are. Uh, Alderman, we're in the process right now of laying that one out and getting ready to do it.
Okay.
Alderman Witcher?
Mr. Ward, is there a, a list of streets you're working on this, this year that you've, you've put together?
We do have a short list, yes.
Okay, and I guess, and the reason I'm asking is because I, I was concerned about Tall Chief, between Seminole and Hoppy, uh, that needs doing. And I, and we haven't had any conversations pertaining, pertaining to anything in the fourth ward, at least I have it with you.
Okay, we'll, we'll look at it and, uh, get with you and discuss it.
Thank you.
Any other member of the council? I'd like to point out, uh, to those of you who didn't have an opportunity before, uh, thank you, Mr. Ward, uh, uh, who, I know Alderman Witcher was there, uh, that the, uh, that the beginning of, uh, demolition, uh, if you'll note, uh, of course, this is Alderman Thomas's and Alderman Skoggins Ward, uh, the Taco Bell is no longer, uh, and the front, uh, uh, portico, uh, in front of the Kroger store, uh, I had a personal opportunity to, uh, wheel a, uh, I don't know, what do you call that?
Trico.
Trico.
Trico, yeah.
To wheel a trico and, uh, and knock some of that down, so...
He's really fleetly... Our work with top insurance will go through them.
Absolutely.
And he did with that hard hat, I might add.
But in any event, to sum that up, for those that weren't able to be there as well as those that are home, the work has already begun on the Alltel Arena, and within the next month and a half, that work should be completed, site preparation ought to be completed, and sometime in August, we don't like to tear down, but if it's coupled with building, it certainly makes it a lot more pleasurable, and today, that was coupled with a project that we're all proud of, and so, gentlemen of the council, it has begun, and we want to again thank all of you for your part in that, as well as the progress on our riverfront park is probably about at the 60 to 70 percent level, at least through the contract. I would encourage you to take a look down there, it is literally going to be, you know, one of the nicest little sections of the Arkansas River that's going to be there. We've got a lot to be proud of, a lot's happening, and I think this community has a lot to be proud of. And with that, let me open the public comment section, and Mr. Rocky McDaniel is first in line.
Alrighty. I'm here tonight on behalf of some of my friends in Levy, I have a petition to give to the city clerk tonight, it has 150 signatures on it, and they would like to have Saturday bus service. Many of these individuals ride the bus now at the present time, the bus has about 300 each way on the bus a day, on the occupancy rate of the bus in Levy, and a lot of them use this to go to work and back and forth, and they would like to have it on the Saturday so they would have a chance to go to the mall, and go other places, and spend their money in the community that they work so hard to earn. So I'd like to ask the council to work towards seeing if they can help these citizens in Levy, if it's nothing but a partial service in the morning, like two or three hours in the morning, two hours in the evening, not necessarily all day, every run, if there's some way that you could work with the Arkansas Transit Service in helping meet the needs of these people who need transportation. Also, I'd like to remind the people at home that the Rental Study Commission will meet this Monday night on Housing Codes, and invite you to come and participate and attend landlords and tenants. Thank you.
That is Monday night at this city council chambers at 7:00. We appreciate Mr. McDaniel.
Six thirty.
Six thirty, I thought I was told 7:00.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
I was incorrect.
I was giving incorrect information, but we appreciate 6:30 this coming Monday night, one week from tonight, at this council chamber. The other thing, Mr. McDaniel, is I certainly support public transit, it's always been a question of dollars, and this council has never wavered on the regular weekday service. Mr. Sisson, would you contact Mr. Keith Jones in that Central Arkansas Transit, and find out what options that may be available for service on a limited and/or a full-time basis, so that we'll have that information to take a look at? Ms. Roseman?
Hi, I'm Alice Roseman, and I live in Ward Four. I have to go from Ward Four to Ward Three to catch a bus to and from my job. I just would like y'all to please take into consideration the petitions that we got up for y'all, and as y'all know, I've talked to several of y'all before, I take medicine is why I have to ride the bus. I have two jobs, so I run back and forth on the bus all the time, shopping, the doctor, work. In the past, some of the council members have called us sap suckers and all different kinds of things, and I'd just like to say that we are people that pay taxes and work, and some of us are disabled, that's true, but we are citizens in North Little Rock, and we pay taxes, and I'd like to say hi to Betty Bradley and Mary, thank you for getting the petition together, and I hope y'all will give it every due consideration. And I'll be seeing Mr. Spinelli soon.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chambers?
Thank you, Mayor, and Alderman. I'd just like to point out, and this is a continuation of the speed bump issue, I don't mean to muddy the waters on this, and by all means install as many speed bumps as you care to, but my calculation's at two leadings a year, 15 per, that's 30 additional minimum per year. I don't know that after two or three years we have that many more streets that would require speed bumps. But I would like to point out to you, and with your permission, I'll send this information to you, they have a pamphlet that shows about 20 different ways of calming traffic without installing speed bumps. In fact, speed bumps are included in there, but they're considered the last resort, not the first method. So with your permission, I'll copy this information and put it in your mailboxes, and you can review the 20 different ways of slowing down traffic, several of which I wish to use in the Argenta Historic District. I would point out that unwarranted traffic signals and unwarranted stop signs are not, are something that they say you can use, but because they're unwarranted, which tends to expose the city in terms of its liability, if this is something, they prefer to use physical means and psychological means to slow traffic down, and it works very, very effectively. This is a national study that was done, and it was also done through multiple public hearings with citizens as to what kind of traffic control devices that do the least disturbance to their neighborhood but have the maximum calming on the traffic. And I know in the Argenta Historic District, we've got two streets that are very fast, three streets that are very fast, and you may have heard we had a child get hit, and honestly, it was a case of child strikes car, not car strikes child, contrary to what you may have read in the paper. But if you would like that information, I'll be glad to copy it and put it in your mailboxes.
Let me ask that if you could get that, Mr. Chambers, to Ms. Munds by next Tuesday at noon, and she'll include that in the packets that we distribute in terms of council information. I think that'd probably be the easiest way to do that, unless there's an objection from any council.
Well, I would point out, when you review these, some of these are things that you'll look at and go, well, I can't possibly conceive of doing that, but this was set up as a menu of things for a citizens group to look at and address their problem by saying, well, at the corner of Birch and Cedar, you know, I think option number 12 might be the best solution, you know? So it gave a menu of what they could choose to calm the traffic, you don't have to use every last one of them, or I wouldn't even suggest using some of them, they're kind of strange and odd, but in some cases, they would have an application.
Appreciate it. Do I have a motion?
Hold on a second.
On the motion, Ms. Munds.
Gibson, McGlopin, Huggins, Thomas, Carter, that's over.
Come to your seats, and... Let me go ahead and ask Ms. Whitby if you'd call Row.
Gibson.
Present.
Yilding.
Here.
Robinson.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Berry.
Present.
Bestel.
Present.
Height.
Here.
And Whitcher.
Present.
Aquormis present, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Whitby, I'd like to ask that we stand for the prayer to be led by Alderman Bestel, followed by a pledge by Alderman Berry.
Father, we stand before thee with bowed heads and humbled hearts, and we hope that you would watch over the citizens of this city, and watch over the decisions made by this council to the betterment of the citizens of this city, and to the county, and to the state. We would hope that you watch over those that are in sickness, and watch over those that are protecting our interests wherever they may be, and support their families, Lord, as you know you can. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Praise allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So moved. Motion made, and committed to the previous meeting, be accepted as submitted. Any discussion on the motion?
Gibson.
Yes.
Yilding.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Whitcher.
Yes.
Jan Scholl is here, we have several members of the mayor's youth council, I believe there are four here that were in attendance at a camp called Anytown Youth Camp, which was sponsored by NCCJ. Jan, would you mind coming to the microphone and introducing the members of the youth council who were there, and tell us a little bit about it, and by the way, Jan, have you gone to Washington yet?
No, that's in September.
Jan was selected by a congressional coalition, coalition of the Adoption Institute, recognizes people every year, and refers to them as Congressional Angels in Adoption Award, and Jan was selected by Senator Lincoln, and nominated by Families Are Special for the Congressional Angels Adoption Award, and she received that award, and serves as Chair of the Board of Families Are Special, and we've got a proclamation we're going to read just as soon as you file in our Mayor's Youth Institute, and the job of the institute is to raise the awareness of thousands of, to all of our citizens, of the thousands of foster children in our country, and the millions of orphans who need permanent safe and loving homes, and we appreciate what you've done. Katia is 11, and Robert is 16, and Jan practices what she preaches, so let's give her a hand as she introduces our members.
Thank you, Mayor Hayes, for that recognition, and thank you for letting us be here tonight. It's always fun to get to bring my kids, to show them off, because they're such neat kids, and we thank you for allowing them to attend Arkansas Anytown, and we thank the council members as well. And I'd like for the council members to read over the notebook that I left at your place tonight, so you can see what the mayor's youth council will be doing this year. I have three kids with me, they're going to introduce themselves, and they're going to tell you in their own words about Arkansas Anytown.
Hi, I'm Buster Geary, I'm a 10th grader at East Campus. First of all, I'd like to thank you for sending me to Anytown, I had a great time, and it was a wonderful experience. I met lots of neat people, and I made lots of new friends. Some of the topics we talked about at camp are racial, ethnic, and cultural identity, stereotyping and discrimination, gender roles, and sexuality. We also talked about interreligious respect. At Anytown, we learn these things don't matter that we are more alike than unlike. The phrase "more alike than unalike" was said by Maya Angelou, a female African-American poet. Those words that she said were kind of our motto for the week. At Anytown, we learned that no matter what, everyone is equal. We learned that no matter creed or race, we have these things by grace. We learned that we are all brothers and sisters in this world, that every person in the world, no matter the color of their skin, or his religion, or cultural difference, everyone is the same, and I'd like to thank you again for sending me to Anytown.
We appreciate you going and representing our city and the youth council.
Hi, I'm Ashley White, and I'm a senior at North Little Rock High School West Campus, and I too would like to thank you for sending me to Anytown, it was a really great experience. The only way to describe it is like an environment with a high concentration of love, tolerance, and diversity. I truly care about all the people that I met there, and even though I only lived with them for a week, I really got to know them. Like, I was crying on the second day, and it wasn't because I wanted to go home or anything, it was because I felt, because of the activity we had done that day, I felt like real compassion for them, and I could tell you everything that we did there, but it would like, it wouldn't help the people that are going there next year, because you have to experience it for yourself. I left with a seriously strong bond with the people that I met there, and definitely send more people, because it's, I want them to have a rewarding experience just like mine.
Thank you, and we appreciate it. Thanks for going.
Hello, I'm Grace Seakin, and I'm a senior at Mount St. Mary's. On Sunday, August 3, 2003, I woke up angry, sad, nervous, and scared. At 2:00 in the afternoon that day, I would have to get on a bus to go to Anytown, Arkansas. At that point in the day, I did not want to go at all, I would have to leave the comfort of my home, I didn't know anyone that was going to be at this place, and I knew I would not make any friends or get to know anyone, for I thought I was headed for the worst week of my life. Little did I know, I was in for a week of making some true lifelong friendships, having self-realizations, and having the best culture shock of my life. I met people from India, Canada, Africa, Mexico, Guatemala, and Elkins, Arkansas. I met Jews, Bahis, Muslims, Sikhs, Pagans, Mormons, Catholics, and Southern Baptists. Anytown is a place where people's ideals become reality, where the girl from India does not only understand and appreciate the Canadian boys' culture, but where they also become best friends. We are more alike than unalike. A quote from one of Maya Angelou's poems was the theme of this year's Anytown, Arkansas. I quote a quote that I would have totally disregarded if not for Anytown, but I now live by this short, yet very true saying. "Anytown was the best week of my life. It's one of those experiences that you have to go through yourself to truly understand what I'm saying. The people and atmosphere at Anytown have changed me for the better. I'm still the same person, but with a totally outlook, a totally different outlook on life. I am no longer naive and oblivious to the things that surround us in our culture. I will no longer just sit back and watch bad things happen around me. Because of that one week, I will make a difference in what I think and do, and what other people think and do, and I have the city of North Little Rock to thank for that. Please keep on sending you to this wonderful program. It's a small place, but where you are taught to act big. Thank you for everything."
Let me thank you and all three of you, I will say that if you were afraid to go, your fear has motivated you in being a very eloquent young lady, you certainly shared some very appropriate thoughts, and was very interesting, and we will take you up on your request, all three of your requests, as we try to add to your numbers next year.
Aren't they neat? I have 75 more just like them. We had one other young man who went, Marcus Nato, who was also a wonderful addition to the group, but he had another commitment this evening, and begged your forgiveness not being here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank all of you. Let me ask another one of our young ladies, this is a time when we can showcase the pride of some of our young people. Crystal, will you want to come up? Crystal Sams. Crystal graduated this past summer from North Little Rock West Campus, and is entered into competition with the Miss Arkansas Co Ed, and is a lifelong resident of our city, and the talent shone through to the judges, and they selected her to represent the coeds of Arkansas, and so we want to recognize her and tell her how much we appreciate her entering into this competition, and certainly the wisdom of the judges, we applaud in selecting her. She's going to be enrolling perhaps later this year, if not next year, at University of Arkansas at Little Rock, and continue with her education, and so on behalf of a grateful community for you stepping forward, and certainly having the wisdom of your parents, having selected North Little Rock, I thank Greg and Monique Lewis in raising you here, so we appreciate you, and as such, I'd like to recognize you as making this Crystal Sams Day on the 28th of June of '03, which is the date you were selected, if I'm not mistaken, in honor of you being selected as Miss Arkansas Co Ed for the year 2003. Crystal, we sure appreciate you, and we look forward to you continuing to represent our city during this year, and as you go out in life. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Crystal, we appreciate it. Thank you. Bill Barling, Bill, you want to stand up? Families Are Special, Bill's been a friend for a long time, and particularly, this day has so much more meaning to me than ever before, and for all of those of you who know, we're going to proclaim this grandparents' day, and I'll talk about Savannah a little bit if I can, who turned one on July 25th of this year, and is truly a joy. So if I could share this with you, whereas most of us have fond memories of the times spent with and lessons learned from our grandparents, whereas we owe so much to our grandparents for the faithfulness of their care and determination to build a better community and world for all of us, and whereas all across this country, grandparents continue to work and build, and whereas in Arkansas, there are 60,000 children in full-time care of grandparents or other relatives, of which 1,307 are cared for by grandparents and other relatives in the city of North Little Rock, and whereas Savannah Lou Staggs would make it 1,308, but her daughter won't let her grandparents see all of her that they want to, I have lived that, just in case y'all weren't aware. Whereas countless child welfare professionals and volunteers across the country have dedicated their lives into educating the general public about the importance of the needs of children, and whereas every person in good conscience believes that every child deserves to have a safe, loving, and permanent family, whereas the city of North Little Rock is fortunate to have two fine agencies which support these families, Advocates and Relatives for Kids, and Families Are Special. Therefore, I, Patrick Hayes, Mayor of North Little Rock, do hereby proclaim Sunday, September the 7th, 2002? That's better, you know, 2003, I knew we were doing it, we weren't that far behind, as National Grandparents' Day in the city of North Little Rock, in recognition of contributions made by grandparents throughout the year, and I therefore to set my hand in seal this 25th day of August, 2003. Bill, thanks for all of what you do, and we have some grandchildren with us?
Yes.
All right. Bill, your microphone's yours.
Okay. Before I introduce our special guest, I'd like for everyone in the audience that is a grandparent to stand up, please. Just stand up. The rest of us will recognize you. Thank you.
I think that we are all pleased that we are.
Indeed, indeed. Mayor, thank you for this proclamation and your support, and members of the city council, thank you. I'd like to introduce two special guests this evening. First of all, the founder of Advocates and Relatives for Kids, Ms. Leitha Rounds, and she's well-known by all of us in the community. And also, I'd like to introduce Ms. Artis Boykin, a resident of North Little Rock, who was selected to be the Arkansas Grandparent of the Year by the National Council of Grandparent Activities, and that she has many stories, some of which you know, but she is raising six of her grandchildren that she adopted as a single parent, and we're, this city is fortunate to have people like Artis and Ms. Rounds. So, thank you, Mayor. One more thing I'd like to call your attention to, we have a map here of the city of North Little Rock, and on it are stars, the children that are being raised by grandparents and other relatives in our city. so you could see them better, but we'll leave this, the map here this evening, and so as you leave this evening, you might want to pass by. And there's a special heart on the map representing Savannah Lou, and who's being spoiled generously, I believe, by the mayor. Thank you.
Bill, thank you. Uh, let me, we've got a couple other things, but I think in deference to some of those here, that I'm going to suggest that we go to the Incas Speed Hump and the public hearing in regard to that, and unless there's objection, I intend to, if we do call it, to call the legislation right after the public hearing. If, if I could ask that it start, be started, Mr. Marvin, you want to come up here, and I know there are people here that are interested in that, we're going to open the microphone, and you can either be speak, you can either speak individually, or if you're being represented by any group, certainly we'd appreciate you acknowledging who you're representing, and you're welcome to ask them to stand if you'd like. Now, let me-
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to have a communication first.
Uh, without, well-
Because there's a couple of people-
Well, yeah, and that's a good idea. Let me go ahead, and that's, that's a good idea, Alderman. Tim, just go ahead and stand there, and, because there are a couple communications that have to do with this, and we might as well just do this at this time. Do I have, on the communication, do I have a blank motion?
Move, accept, and file.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, and one, three, and four, I know are ones that, is there any others?
Two.
Okay.
I'd like to have number one read.
Okay, yeah, one, three, and four, and two. So one through four.
And nine.
And nine. Okay. Okay.
Let me make a suggestion. Can we handle the three that have to do with the speed hump and then handle the other one, because I don't, I want to-
Yeah, what I'm gonna, yeah-
Hold number nine myself.
Yeah, what I'm gonna do, Alderman, is I'm gonna go ahead and get the blank in motion, and then, then we'll do the three that are regarding the speed hump and do that other one afterwards. Uh, all right, one, two, three, four, and nine. On the motion, Ms. Whitby?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
All right, now would you read, so what I'm gonna do, if that's all right, is to go ahead and do one, three, four, and then, then we'll come back and do two and nine. Would you read number one?
Yes, sir. This is a letter from Russ and Shannon Redmond, 7009 Incas Drive, dated August 14th, 2003. Dear Mayor Hayes and City Council, I am writing to you in response to an article that was carried in the news brief section of the North Little Rock Times regarding a speed hump that was installed on Incas Drive. I'd like for you to read the following study completed by the North Little Rock Traffic Services. Incas Drive, 6,907,000 Blocks, 41502. Petition received with nineteen signatures from thirteen homes along Incas. Fifty-eight calls were received during public comment with thirty-nine opposing and nineteen supporting the installation. It's interesting to note that of the thirty-nine calls in opposition, not one lives in the subject area of Incas, but rather at a location requiring them to use Incas to travel to and from their homes. Speed study results show a volume of 1,331 with an average speed of twenty-five miles per hour and an eighty-fifth percentile speed of twenty-nine miles per hour. Additionally, 193 cars were recorded at thirty miles per hour or faster with a top speed of forty-two miles per hour. TSD recommends one speed hump to be installed between 6,908 and 6,912. It would perhaps be quite appropriate to install an additional speed hump in the vicinity of 7009 Incas as well, considering this seems to be the point at which speeds are at their highest. However, due to the hills and curves in the immediate area, a hump could easily cause drivers to lose control, resulting in accidents. Therefore, installation of an additional hump is not recommended. I would like to point out that the speed limit on Incas Drive is twenty miles per hour. Obviously, we have a serious problem with people who speed down our road. My personal interest in this issue was sparked in the spring of 2002, when one of those speeding vehicles almost hit my son. I do not understand Mayor Hayes' position in calling for a public hearing to possibly have the speed hump removed, when there is ample evidence and research that clearly identifies the need for the speed hump. To slow the motorists down for the safety of our children and our homes, residents who live on Incas Drive support the speed hump. Are the complaints of a few people more important to Mayor Hayes than the safety of our children? Here is the really amazing part of the story. Every day since the speed hump was installed, some of the people who protest the speed hump are purposely speeding faster down Incas. There is one lady who drives a white Cadillac, who every time she comes down Incas Drive, honks her horn halfway down the road in protest of the speed hump. It is my understanding from one of my neighbors that the protest was so bad last Sunday night that a North Little Rock police officer came to help us with our problem and issued approximately eighteen speeding tickets and took two people to jail. One gentleman who lives on Incas was almost hit by one of the speeding drivers. Why is this behavior being rewarded by Mayor Hayes? And the people, if the people insist on speeding, why is our mayor supporting their outright disobedience of our laws? There were public hearings before the speed hump was installed to discuss being in favor of it or being opposed to it. I was present at these meetings, and there was no one there opposing it. If the people have such an issue with the speed hump, there is an alternative route to Osage Drive by way of Flint Rock Drive. If there are, if they are that passionately against the speed hump, take the alternate route. It is a simple matter of turning right off of their road to get to Osage Drive and not left. Is the issue of the people opposing the speed hump more about their own anger and throwing a fit until they get their way, even by illegal means? I hope not. My child's life and my family's safety is entirely more important, especially when people who are opposing the speed hump have another way to get to Osage Drive other than driving over the speed hump on Incas. I believe that Mayor Hayes needs to realize all of the facts of this issue and not just listen to the voice of a few people who are mad because their illegal driving habits have been curbed by the ones who, who choose to enforce safety for our families and homes. It's my opinion that Mayor Hayes should stand behind the research of his Traffic Services Department, the North Little Rock City Council, who approved the speed hump, and the citizens of North Little Rock who have followed what the North Little Rock laws require to have a speed hump installed. Our mayor should stand 100% behind the system he has put into place and not cave in to the ones who disobey these laws simply because they do not want to slow down on Incas. Sincerely, Shannon Redmond.
I know, we accept it.
Second. On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Do you read number three, please?
Yes, sir. Number three is, it's a list of petitions that was filed by Lenta Kuta, and it contains approximately a hundred and nine, a hundred and twenty-nine names in opposition to the speed hump at 6,900, in the 6,900 block of Incas. Did you want me to read the names?
Uh, might as well. I think it's necessary, just, if there's any, if there's any wording on the petition, go ahead and read that, and then you can tell how many, how many signed it.
Um, the wording is petition opposing speed hump in the 6,900 block of Incas, and that is consistent.
Move, accept, and file.
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
All right, the number four?
Number four, this is an email from Vicki Tompkins. It's dated August the 18th. It's, "I've read and reread the news brief article in last week's North Little Rock Times regarding Mayor Hayes' suggestion that a recently installed speed hump on Incas Drive be removed. I've tried to digest and consider all the possibilities of what he could be thinking to even suggest such a thing. I cannot comprehend what he's thinking. I live on the west side of Osage Drive, Osage Drive in North Little Rock where there is a speed hump, but not near my house. Believe me, there should be several more on Osage Drive. But that aside, I have friends with children who live on Incas Drive. I called City Hall in support of the Incas Speed Bump during the time it was being considered. I have been in their front yard when cars have come down that road in both directions. Some of those cars are driving faster than you can imagine. There are insufficient adjective words to express how fast some of them are going when you consider that you're standing on a residential road where young children could be playing. It's frightening." In the article, it states that of the complaints, none of the complainants actually lives on Incas. If that's true, why are they given consideration in the matter? It is obviously a thoroughfare for them, and they have no stake in the safety considerations of the road. It also states that in the traffic study, that the average speed of the thirteen hundred vehicles were in excess of twenty miles per hour. Not surprising to me is that 200 of those cars traveled in excess of thirty miles per hour. Did I miss something? Isn't that considered a traffic violation and against the law? The fact that Mayor Hayes is even considering hearing arguments over removing the speed hump, given the traffic study evidence, is inconceivable. The residents that have complained have obviously been unsuaved by the posted speed, posted speed limit signs and have shown a disregard for the safety of the children and other residents that live on Incas. Therefore, should not have a say in the speed hump placement or removal. Let them throw their fits, let them make their calls, and then tell them that because they could not adhere to the speed limits, they will have to endure a speed hump as a reminder period. Vicki L. Tompkins."
Move, accept, and file.
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Mr. Marvin, you want to come to the microphone? And while Mr. Marvin's coming to the microphone, I'm gonna let him comment on that. You know, obviously, you know, I, my name was raised in several of those communications, and I certainly think that, you know, folks ought to deserve, or do deserve, an answer of why I brought this up. We, at least at this council, and certainly, again, the mayor's office, like to be as responsive as we know how. And, and there's absolutely no doubt, in the fourteen and a half years that I've been down here, that one of the most difficult problems that we try to solve is residential speeding. We've been dealing with it ever since I've been down here. I'm sure we've dealt with it many years before I ever came. I knew I grew up and grew up on Magnolia Street, and, and, you know, I don't have any doubt that perhaps things are worse now than they were when I grew up. We now have two four-way stops where we had absolutely no stops before. I'm not a real big fan of some devices, and speed humps, to be candid, are not one of them. I'm not a real fan of thinking that they do all of perhaps what people think they do. Sometimes there may even be a false sense of security. But the last thing that I like to do, and each of us try to do the best we can in making those decisions. This is not an easy decision to make, and whoever thinks that I don't have a real concern for young people and children on any street of this city, whether it be Incas or any other street, is mistaken. You know, I do have a great concern, you know, for the young people. I have a great concern for the life and livelihood of every citizen in this city. And, and I am not absolutely convinced, now, that speed humps are perhaps the worst of any method that we have of trying to control speed. I am very sorry that, that this has divided several neighborhoods in our community, and I hope maybe we can find some more understanding than perhaps has been shown up to this point. I absolutely abhor and think any of the gestures, which I understand may have gone on out there between the two neighborhoods, the, the bad words, the taunting, I think that is just an absolute ridiculous way people would act. You know, we're down here, and, and some people are going to be unhappy about the decision that this city council makes. But rest assured, I think each council member is really wrestling with why or how to do what is in the best interest of the community as a whole. And sometimes we have to make decisions that aren't, that aren't popular. And, and the one thing that I do know is, is I am very concerned about the utilization of this device, and particularly, you know, as this council set up the, the procedure to follow, and obviously, that procedure was followed. And, and a large measure of why we're here, at least at this moment, is, is my fault, and I'll accept blame for it. We set up a procedure for Mr. Marvin to follow. We posted a telephone number for those that were opposed to these speed humps and notifying that areas are being considered for those, so that people would have an opportunity to voice their, either support or opposition. And, and I did not look at the report. Now, I can't speak for any member of the council, but I can speak for myself. I didn't look at the report. I'm sure that if the record will reflect, I sponsored the speed hump legislation that adopted that speed hump. I regularly do that. And, and yet, we set up a method, and I didn't follow the reading of the report, because if I had read it, knowing that there was that significant opposition to this, and no one spoke, maybe because some of those that were opposed had a rule provided that they felt that opposition would be recorded and read. Again, not speaking for any other member of this council, but I know that I didn't. And because I didn't, I felt a responsibility to, to bring that up, knowing that if I had known what I knew then, I would not have supported the installation of the speed hump. Now, speed humps are a, 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 one of several cures to a problem, you know, and there are various answers that we have to address that problem. As I mentioned, one that we did on, and the two council members for Ward 1 mandated that that be done, to install four-way stops. Now, Incas doesn't have a cross street, so, you know, that may not very well be an option. But there are options that are out there, and the one thing that each of you can take out of this meeting is that whatever this council does, whether it be the installation of a, or the retention of the, of the speed hump, or even with that, you know, the working with the police department, or maybe there are other approaches that we can take to address the speed out there. There is, is no way that, that we intend to tolerate the kind of significant abuses that appear to be going on out there. Mr. Marvin's report reflects a, a large number of speeders, and so the problem is not anything that we're debating, it's, it's some of the possible solutions that we have. And I'm taking a little bit longer than I'd really like to, but y'all, the question was asked, and, and so I felt it deserved an answer. Mr. Marvin, you got any comments, and we'll open the floor for discussion. Excuse me, if I could ask y'all to please give attention to the public hearing? Thank you.
I can read again the body of the report that dealt with this particular location. I think Ms. Whitby read it as part of the, one of the communications. The petition itself was received here on the 15th of April of '02, and it was, along with a number of others, investigated in January, February, and parts of March this year. The signs were posted with phone number asking for any comments, either for or against. The results of that comment period are, are again listed in the report. The speed hump was installed approximately two weeks ago, and that's where we are today. If you would like, I can reread the body of the report.
I don't think that's necessary. With that, the microphone's open, and, you know, feel free to come up and make your comments. And the one thing that I am sure that we're going to maintain a, a very civil and decorum demeanor here at the council chambers, microphone's open.
My name is Susan Eames, and I live at 5 Shady Valley Court in North Little Rock, and I'm speaking for several of my neighbors. We believed in our neighborhood that we were following North Little Rock procedures. A sign went up about a possible speed bump on Incas, and we responded. When the decision came before the city council, I was reported that nineteen were for it, and twice as many, thirty-nine people had voiced their opposition to it. I believe that the council acted against solicited public opinion in going forward with the speed bump. School zones posted twenty-five mile per hour speed limit. Are we to believe that the city council thinks that the people on Incas are more in danger than the kids in our school zones? I spoke with an Alderman in adjoining city, and the fire department in that city discourages speed bumps because they impede the progress in responding to a fire. Our fire department already has one speed bump to cover to respond to a fire in our neighborhood, and I believe that is another concern of our neighbors. I happen to drive a very low car. I have a very hard time getting over it. I've never really speeded on Incas. I mean, I'm sure I have once in a while. The, the machine that gauged our speed when it was put up for those three months was on a downhill slope, and you had to sit on your brakes to even drive twenty. So I don't know that that twenty-five mile per hour speed limit was a good judge of how fast people drive on that street. I've walked on that street for over twenty-five years. I've never even come close to being hurt. The only problem that I see is when the people park on the hill of the street, and it's very hard to get around them. For these and the hundred and twenty-five signatures that we submitted, I urge you to remove the overly large speed bump that's now on Incas. Thank you.
Microphone's open.
right across from Western Sizzling, I'm sure that there's a lot of people that speed down that hill, as I've kind of watched. So I'm not so sure that if you wanted to, Jake would probably agree with me, that if you, there'd be any number of places that you could test the speed, and a lot of people would be exceeding the speed limit. So that, to me, doesn't say a whole lot. I don't think I speed at all when I go down that street, and it would be very difficult to anyhow, because it is downhill, curving, and it's just not, and there are so many parked cars on there. I thought when I first saw the petition signed, that it was going to say, "There's a petition to have all cars quit parking on the street," because you almost have to get sideways to get in between.
Would y'all agree?
So I think that might, you know, it's possible that would be a very good thing to consider as far as safety, because of those cars that are obstructing. And some seem to park there a lot. Have y'all ever seen any there 24 hours a day?
No.
All the time. So that is a concern. And I just think that we don't seem to see a whole lot of speeding that I call on Silverwood Trail. And as far as I know, I haven't heard of too many of our kids being hit. I know I've got three children, and I've lived out there for about 18 years. And to my knowledge, no one has been hit by speeding motors. So I think that the speed bump definitely should be removed.
Microphone's open.
I live on Incas Drive there, and 30 years. Now, what, some of these people who live on that area beyond us don't seem to realize...
Can you state your name, please?
My name is Robert Windsorling.
Thank you.
It's a residential street. Now, I don't know where they grew up or where they've lived, but in a residence, in most every area you go to, the speed limits with narrow streets like that are around 20 miles an hour. It's just that way. Another option would be, he's talking about taking the cars off the street, widen the road, make it a four lane. But I don't think that's practical. The people live in Shady Valley. Why don't they put in another road where they can exit elsewhere? Seems that's an option. As far as cars parking on the street, well, a lot of those driveways aren't that long. You have visitors over, or maybe out-of-town relatives come, stay with you. So there are vehicles out on the street. We're not parking them on the grass, are we? Although I see on Osage, there's a few, including a police car parked in the grass. It takes, at 20 miles an hour, to drive from Silverwood Trail out to Osage, it takes 44 seconds at 20 miles an hour. So these people whipping up there at 40, they're saving themselves 22 seconds. But there are people walking along, there's no sidewalks there. You have the walkers, the joggers, people riding bicycles. Road's just not wide enough to take all that at a high speed. The other thing, the people who live in Shady Valley aren't the only ones come down Incas. You've got all kinds of service vehicles, delivery trucks, you've got the contractors. There's even a big old school bus comes down there. And until recently, it clipped down that road at a pretty good pace. So it's just not their vehicles. You've got all these other big vehicles. It was not too long ago, there was a truck delivery of cement block. Anyway, he took that dip in that turn up there too fast, and he dumped a whole lot of blocks out there in front of Leon's place. But if he'd been just touching the brakes a little bit, it's not too difficult. Vehicles are equipped with brakes. Some of us old folks know about downshift, and you can put it into a lower gear if you want to come down a hill. But the speed hump is needed. In fact, if I were doing it, I'd put in a speed hump about every 150 feet. That's the only way you really can control the whole thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone's still open.
Mayor Hayes, Councilman Wayne Lee. I live on Incas. And the first thing I want to say is, do you see how ridiculous this is? We're arguing over a speed bump. I mean, do you see how ridiculous this is? I mean, we're arguing over a speed bump, and we're saying, in essence, "Look, you live in Shady Valley, I live on Incas, let's have a big fight over a speed bump." This is ridiculous. So I want to say first, before I get into this, to all my friends that live out in Shady Valley, hey, I'm sorry if I've offended you. I really am, and I mean that from the bottom of my heart. But the problem that we've got right now is that this thing's really gotten silly on both sides. The fire trucks, they can't, they got to go over a speed bump. Well, they're going over a speed bump anyway before they get there. You don't like the speed bump on Incas? Go down Flint Rock. It's the same distance. I feel your pain. I went to the back, I really do feel your pain. I went to the back of Shady Valley, Sunday morning. I went all the way to the back of Shady Valley, and I clocked the distance to JFK. It's two miles. If I lived back there, I'd probably speed down Incas myself occasionally, but I want to tell you something. You're not going to hear from anybody on Incas that it hadn't slowed traffic down. It slowed me down, and I live there. Okay? Now, the speed bump was not properly installed, I don't guess. They didn't mark it. Some people hit it, and they bumped it. And it should have been properly marked, and it wasn't properly marked. But you know, to compare this, say, you know, if we go out to JFK, we can find us a main thoroughfare, and we put speed bumps on it, is the most ridiculous thing I ever heard. JFK's a main thoroughfare. It's four-lane. Incas is a residential neighborhood. The cars are going too fast down Incas. We recognize and documented the problem. I've had two cats killed in the last month on Incas by drivers that didn't even stop. Now, my cat shouldn't have got out, darted out under my feet, and now he's dead. I don't want my kid to get out and dart out under my feet and be dead next. My kids have almost been hit out there. They can't play in the front yard. So we have recognized what the problem was, and the city council recognized what the problem was. And we had a speed bump installed. And we've recognized the dangerous situation, and we've done something about it. We said one fits where we put it, and one wouldn't fit at the bottom of the hill because it might be dangerous. So we didn't put the one at the bottom of the hill, and we did put the one where it fits. Now we have a petition to remove. No petitioners live on Incas. Two petitioners, one petitioner lives in Lakewood, and one lives toward Pine Bluff. I read, I got the petition. Okay? The traffic, you can tell me, if you live in Shady Valley, you can tell me all day long, I don't believe that the speed bump cured the problem. Well, you drive by there. I lived there, and it has cured the problem. The traffic has slowed down. My kids are safer because of that speed bump. There's an alternate route. You take the speed bump out, you go to the end of Incas, what do you do? You turn right and hit another speed bump. You take a right and go around Flint Rock, you miss both of them. Okay? It's two miles back out of Shady Valley. It's 150 yards if you want to cut a back entrance, but if you cut that back entrance, you're going to feel the pain that Incas feels, because now you're going to be a thoroughfare. Bumps don't hurt anything if cars aren't speeding. Bumps are designed to hurt something if cars are speeding. When it was unmarked, it wasn't any good, but let's look at the effect of removing that speed bump. And I want the council to think about this. We've recognized a dangerous situation, and we've gone in and we've corrected it. The police can't patrol that street all the time. That wouldn't be fair to ask them. The real issue that this council faces right now is whether or not you're going to allow the petition of people that don't live on a street to dictate what happens on that street, because they choose to go down that street as opposed to go on another route. If you do that, and I want to specifically address this to the aldermen of the other wards, if you do that, when you let the tiger out of the cage, think about what's going to happen. What's going to happen when 500 people in Indian Hills say, "We want the back entrance cut to Shady Valley"? We don't live there, but we want the back entrance cut. Or we want, we want speed bumps put on Silverwood Drive, and we've got lots and lots of people signing this petition. Now, we don't live on Silverwood, but we want speed bumps put on Silverwood. You've got, you've got a dangerous situation that you've already recognized, and if you pull that speed bump up and a child gets killed on there, you know what's going to happen. And worse than that, if one of the people that signed that petition happens to accidentally be going too fast and hits that kid, you really know what's going to be happening. They're going to bring that petition right up in their face. There is no legitimate reason to remove the speed bump. I got another, this is the, this is the issue. I got another route. It's no further. It avoids two speed bumps. This isn't my street, but go ahead and remove it, will you? The mayor and the city council, y'all in a difficult situation right now. You've got a choice between what's right and what's politics. And you do. Your constituents and my friends, and I have lots of them that live in Shady Valley, my friends should understand when you do the right thing, just like I should understand if you don't vote with me and you do the right thing. We have an inherent mistrust that's widespread all across this nation right now of politicians. And one of the mistrust of those politicians is that things go on behind closed doors, and that certain people get to push their weight around when others can't. Well, I'm going to propose something to you. If you're going to remove the speed bump, then be man enough and woman enough to call it what it is. It's pure politics. There's no other good reason. But here's my proposal to you. I think that if the people in Incas and the people in Shady Valley sit down and talk to each other, and look each other eyeball to eyeball, I bet they can come up with their own solution and something to bring back to this council. I'm willing to do that on behalf of the people of Incas. And I would ask that the council defer a vote on that and give the Shady Valley and Incas people time to do that. This is the wrong thing to do, and you're setting a bad precedent by doing it if you remove it.
Microphone's still open.
Good evening, mayor, council members. Y'all probably wondering why I'm here, because I live in Rose City. There's speed bumps all over Rose City. Sometimes I go over two on School Street and one on Atkins to go to Humms Hardware Store. And there's people that lives on that street that, I don't know who that was, that put the petition out to get it signed to get the speed hump put up, but I can hear people on Atkins, 12:01, 2 o'clock in the night. That don't happen no more, because if it does, when they land, that's going to be the end of it. And the same way that people tell me on School Street, there's two just a little over a block apart. And I go over both of them, and it ain't no problem. The only thing that reminds me is when I see that speed hump, if they've had a problem in this neighborhood, and then I see kids playing out in the front, that's three, four, five years old, got balls, and some of them have just got a little bucket playing in the dirt. Any one of them kids could wander out in behind one of them cars and be hit. And they talking about going down a hill, that's what brakes is put on a car for. It's to slow a car down. And it was also a stop sign mentioned. It don't do no good to put a stop sign after seven or eight, 10 blocks, a four-way stop sign. It needs to be scooted further back up to where they don't get to going so fast. But, and the reason I'm saying this, if y'all move that speed hump, that's going to affect the ones that we have in Rose City. Because if y'all take that one up, then it could be a petition of people out of the neighborhood can bring this to y'all to have them out there moved. And I wouldn't sign one of them to be moved out of this neighborhood, because they wanted them in there, and I think they have a right. And if y'all go back and take this out, y'all have went back on your word, and that don't show very good leadership of North Little Rock. Thank you, mayor.
Mr. Taylor, you're wrong there, that this city has already removed one speed hump on Kerry Drive that we put up, and that's what we're going through right now.
Well, that's the first one that I've heard moved.
Now, this is the second time this issue's come up, but we've already had one up on Kerry Drive, and it was removed, and that didn't start a slipping slope, so I disagree with what you said.
Okay, well, you have your opinion.
I do. Microphone's still open.
Hi, mayor, I'm Shannon Redmond. Councilman, it's nice to see you tonight. This is also to the fellow citizens in North Little Rock. The decision that you all make today, it will affect the future. I come before you tonight to simply take you back to my original purpose, to have the speed hump installed. It's not about what I want. It's not about what other people want. It's simply about protecting my family to the best of my abilities. Whether you vote to leave the speed hump in or take it out, it will not change the fact that I will continue to do everything within my power, within legal means, to protect myself and my family from those who choose to disobey the law and speed down my street and past my home. I chose to try and make a difference using the ordinances that you all put into place to make my street a safer place. But as I was told by the city attorney, you made the law to protect me, and you can take that law away. You can take it back. And it's just that simple. The choice you make today will determine quite a few things for the future. If you choose to vote to have the speed hump removed, how will the tax-paying citizens trust you with their money? When you make ordinances, you use taxpayer money to install speed humps, and then you turn around a couple of weeks later and use more taxpayer money to remove the same speed hump you previously approved and deemed necessary. You place yourselves in a position that if other citizens complain to you about speed humps in their neighborhoods and present a petition to you, you must use more taxpayer money to remove that speed hump as well. How can you tell them no if you chose, if you choose to remove this one? You place my family and all of the families on Incas Drive in danger of being injured or killed by the speeding motorists who excessively speed down our road. You each and every one will have to live with the consequences if someone does get injured or killed, because their blood will be on your hands and on your conscience, if you choose to have the speed hump removed. If you choose to vote to leave the speed hump in place, the citizens of North Little Rock will believe that your word is true and that you are in office to preserve the public peace, health, and safety of all of the North Little Rock citizens. You will be known as aldermen who, even in the storm of controversy, stand behind the ordinances that you put into place. The motorists on Incas Drive will continue to slow down and be forced to obey the speed limit signs that are there for our safety. The speed hump has made people slow down. It has made a difference. Our children will be allowed to grow up in a safe environment, and lives will be saved. The people who have protested to get the speed hump taken out have also made a choice. You know, I've heard the complaints of the people about the speed hump, and I've driven over it myself several times. When you go down Incas and you go the speed limit, which is 20 miles per hour down our road, you don't ramp it, you don't damage your vehicle, and it is not a nuisance. These things only happen when you're speeding, the exact reason that it's needed. Most adults don't like being told what to do, and that is exactly what this speed hump does. They tell you to slow down and do what you're supposed to do, do what you're supposed to do, which is drive the post to speed limit. For the citizens who have petitioned the council to have the speed hump removed, I have some questions for you to think about. Is your desire to speed down Incas Drive more important than the safety of the children and families who live on Incas Drive? Whose life being lost is it going to take before you understand the severity of the situation? And which one of you is it going to be who kills one of us or our children before you realize this is truly not about what the people who live on Incas Drive want and what the people who live in Shady Valley want? It's not about that at all. Or which one of your sons or daughters will it be that comes speeding down Incas? Or which one of your sons or daughters will it be that comes speeding down Incas Drive, not paying attention to what they're doing, and crashes into another vehicle, and they lose their life? Then will you understand? This is about making our street a safer place to live for us and for you and your families. Maybe you're not the one speeding, but obviously, there are people who do. If you have convinced the city council to remove the speed hump, then what hope is there for anyone to believe in a system that doesn't work? Or to believe in a mayor or a city council